Network, yeah, as much as I can, I guess.
It's good, yeah. Now LinkedIn is a great way to do it.
You meet all these guys like ladies at the like the breakfasts across the states.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it's good to know. Plus, I mean, in the scheme of things, it's kind of, it's similar to like lawyers who practice in a certain area.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a small community, I mean, like, you know, the town managers, town administrators.
It's only what, three hundred and fifteen?
Yeah, right, I mean, you must cross paths with same people all the time.
Oh, yeah, I mean, even just like outside of the select board, obviously, like treasurer, collectors, accountants, it's like, you know, like, everybody is in this.
Yeah, yeah, which is kind of cool, having like a brotherhood, sisterhood.
It's a very small world, which makes it highly difficult.
Right, right.
Because, I mean, nothing of it's wrong, I mean, some of it's like pretty specialized and that if, like, you know, it's not a transfer of old knowledge, so when you're coming in, you go over a job, and it's like, well, someone new is coming in.
Michelle.
You got Maryam.
She has Deidre's phone number?
Yeah.
You have Deidre's phone number? I'll give her a call.
Oh, sure, yeah, musical chairs.
Musical chairs.
Yeah, right, right.
That's how you kind of get to know everybody.
Okay, thank you.
It's like whenever you hire and...
Okay.
We got the tax.
She's here, Joe.
Okay.
Just, just, just driving.
All right, is this the, okay, so this is the one I should be working on?
Yeah, so what we'll do is, so this meeting, so you'll tell them what I'm...
At six o'clock?
Yep, I'm just gonna go straight to the, uh...
Evening?
Uh, I'm at item A.
Okay, great.
Walk a mile for a parking spot?
Once you get started, once this is done.
There's no parking.
This is at seven P. M., see?
Oh, it was here, okay.
Uh, and then I want, we'll wait until the fire chief gets here, and then if we can just jump to... Fire chief gets here, because he's at the CPC meeting.
Okay.
And I want them to be...
I'm good, thank you.
Be here for questioning for, uh, I, just the budget review.
Okay, cool, all right, sounds good. All right, chief, we'll, uh, I'll pick it off if you're, if you go. Um, oh, is Diane here?
I don't know.
Oh, oh.
She's supposed to be, she knows to be.
All right.
We'll get going, we'll get going, chief.
All right, well, welcome, everybody. You can... All right, here we go. Uh, welcome. This is the, uh, January sixth, twenty twenty six.
Getting used to saying that. Meeting of the Wenham Select Board, uh, commencing at six oh three P. M. Present from the Select Board here this evening, our Vice Chair, Gary Cheeseman, Secretary Deirdre Parati, Treasurer Peter Clay, Member Karen Anger, and my name's Ben Timman. And we have a few things on the agenda, but we are very happy to, uh, fast forward to the reason that I think ninety-five or ninety-eight percent of you are here, unless you really want to hear, you know, a review of meeting minutes and exciting things like that. Um, so we're gonna move right to, uh, item A on the agenda, the swearing in ceremony for, um, four of our officers, um, and I will turn it right over to you, chief, to begin the festivities.
Thank you, Ben, appreciate it. I, I can't tell you how incredibly proud I am to stand here in, in front of this, this group, uh, to, to be a part of what we've built here with the men and women that are working for this police department and, and the support we get from this community, this Select Board, and so many people in this room. I can't tell you how much it means to me and Deputy Chief Luke Contoni to stand up here. This is a incredible event, just obviously looking, looking out into the crowd and see the support that we have, and some folks drove quite a, quite a long way is a, a true testament to the support that our officers have. And so, um, again, I, I can't thank everyone enough for taking the time, the family members, friends, relatives, and for, uh, some of the citizens that are here, just to support the men and women of this police department. Um, makes me, makes me super proud to be a part of, uh, the, a small part of what we're building, because we're only as good, myself and the deputy, as the men and women that work with us and for us. And I'd be nothing without the hard work that they do every day and along with what other men and women in law enforcement do every day, just to keep the, uh, the people of this state safe. So, thank you again, I really, really appreciate it. Um, without further ado, we're gonna start, uh, with Officer Bart Corners, uh, soon to be formerly Sergeant Corners. Uh, I ask Bart and wife Crystal and, uh, daughters Lila and Aubrey to come up, uh, to assist. No pressure.
(coughing)
(laughing)
Just like we practiced.
Am I doing it now?
Nope, yeah, I'll, I'll walk you through it, I'm just gonna slow walk for one minute till our, uh, clerk just takes care of a few more items. Um, while we're doing that, please eat the humongous cake in the back, um, and, and... Did you guys eat any cake yet?
Yes!
Okay, I could tell, I could tell. Um, it is without a doubt, if, to start with Bart, I, I couldn't be more proud, uh, the process, uh, that the five officers went through, uh, to be, standing up here today, to be recognized to be, uh, one of our two newest sergeants for the Wenham Police Department. It was stressful and strenuous, to, to say the least. It, uh, is a testament to their hard work, their character, their dedication to this agency, how much time they put in to get to where they can stand before everyone in this room and, uh, be pinned. It, uh, it, it means a lot and it recognizes what they've, uh, put to be here. Um, to start with Bart, as a result of the retirement of Sergeant Marsh, a promotional process was conducted to select his replacement for the next full-time Wenham Police Sergeant. Officer Corners, um, was ultimately selected after a thorough process that was fully conducted by, uh, Public Safety Consultants of Bloxville, Massachusetts. Officer Corners is an experienced police officer with six years of full-time police experience and nine, nine years part-time police experience. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminology from Suffolk University and a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Boston University. Uh, Sergeant Corners, uh, worked on the Nemlik RRT unit from oh-three to twenty-five. He also is heavily involved with, uh, new recruit and in-service training for the Municipal Police Training Committee. Uh, he too assists, uh, at numerous area departments, uh, with CPR and defensive tactics training. Many people in this room and people I meet in my travels, uh, in the state will constantly mention Bart's name, uh, because of the interaction they've had with him in some type of training component. And beyond just saying, hey, I know, uh, Officer Corners or now Sergeant Corners, they, they speak to his character, his training ability, how they, he makes them feel when he's teaching these new recruits in this in-service training in the area police department, that the class, uh, that he represents himself in our agency, so I can't thank him enough. And I'm, I'm pleased to formally present Bart Corners as one of our newest sergeants who was, uh, appointed to the position, uh, by our Select Board, uh, effective Sunday, November ninth, twenty twenty-five. And I now have, uh, Clerk Buco, who's gonna come on up and, uh, swear Bart in, so he can be pinned by his family.
You ready? Hi, congratulations. Do you solemnly swear that you will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the Town of Wenham, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police sergeant for the Town of Wenham to the best of your abilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you speak just a little louder?
I can, absolutely. Now, I imagine if I asked you to raise your hand who drove a long distance for Michelle, there'd probably be a bunch of people that would raise their hands, so, uh, that in itself speaks to, uh, the impact that she's made in her career, um, with folks down the Cape and since she's been here. I'm approached on a regular basis by citizens of all ages that talk about interactions the, uh, they have with Michelle, and it's all positive, it's all good stuff, and it, and it's everything that we're trying to do, and Michelle's been a big part of that whole community policing model that's been in place for a while. If, if you looked up, uh, in the book, it would be a picture of Michelle there, so, uh, be, uh, super, super proud to be standing before you to present Michelle as well. Um, a- again, I thank you all for, um, coming here and taking the ride. I want to personally, uh, further specifically recognize, uh, some people in the room, uh, Major, um, Craig Scheck, Director of Operations, Two Hundred and Third Intelligence Squadron. Um, thank you, sir. Uh, Chief Master Sergeant Dean Shaw, Senior Enlisted Leader, Two Hundred and Third Intelligence Squadron for the U. S. Air Force. And then Master Sergeant, uh, Morgan Marconi, Hundred and Second Intelligence Wing First Sergeant. So, thank you, uh, very much. Um, again, we, as, as mentioned before, we, we had a recent vacancy that, um, caused us to, uh, move forward with the process that Michelle was a big part of. I think she was studying, preparing for her first day here. Um, and the, if you have a question about a law or something motor vehicle related, just go to Michelle and she will answer it in two seconds. Uh, she was ready, prepared, this is something, uh, that I have the utmost confidence that Michelle is gonna be an incredible sergeant moving forward. Uh, she's an experienced police officer, coming to us with eleven years of, uh, full-time police experience. Uh, she has Bachelors of Science degree in criminal justice from the University of South Carolina and a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice from, uh, University of Massachusetts, Lowell. Um, Michelle has also worked as a Christance Negotiator for Nemlik from, uh, two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-five. She is also currently a Master Sergeant, First Sergeant for the Two Hundred and Third Intelligence Squadron of the United States, uh, Air Force, Air National Guard. Uh, she too received, uh, prestigious, um, Levittow Award in twenty nineteen. It should be known, uh, just doing the research that I was doing to be prepared tonight, that, uh, the eligibility for this award is reserved for those graduates who rank in the top one percent of their class. So, I, I ask everyone, uh, if you do have a second to look that up, I, I didn't know it, because Michelle's not the type to talk about it, but when I found it out and did the research on it, it's, it's pretty incredible, uh, so that should definitely be acknowledged. Uh, with that said, I'm pleased to formally present Michelle Princey as one of our newest sergeants who was appointed to that position of Patrol Sergeant with effective start date of Sunday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and I now ask Clerk Buco to move forward.
You solemnly swear that you will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the Town of Wenham, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the police force in the Town of Wenham to the best of your own ability. I do.
Okay, uh, Marissa, you're up next.
So, I'd like to recognize, um, please, Marissa's mother Ginny and her father Anthony, along with her sisters Ashley and Jessica, who are here, uh, to support her on this big achievement. Uh, and I also, uh, would like to, uh, formally introduce Marissa's grandmother, Mary Ann Cosgrove, who's here to help assist with the pinning as well. Thank you for, uh, for being here. Um, so, again, you know, there's, there's certain people that, that you know are so passionately, genuinely excited to be a part of this field and this profession, and Marissa exudes that. Every single day, we see her at the police department, every day since day one, whether it was her first interview, whether it was, uh, part of the field training, uh, process, whether it was, um, you know, just the day-to-day learning the job, she's always positive, she's always upbeat as a, as a, uh, Chief of Police, and I know the deputy feels the same way, to have those interactions and to genuinely, when this field has been tough as of late, to see someone that is so proud and happy to be a part of this profession, to make, uh, the citizens of Wenham safe and that of Massachusetts as well. I, I can't tell you how incredibly lucky I am and we are as a community and a police department to have Marissa on board. Uh, so, in, uh, May of twenty twenty-five, as mentioned already, Sergeant Marsh retired after a thirty-year career. Uh, this created the vacancy to immediately need to fill that position with a full-time candidate. Uh, at that time, the Wenham Police Department, uh, conducted a recruitment process and identified Marissa as an excellent candidate to fill that void. Uh, she's resident of Topsfield, a full-time certified police officer, and she graduated from the Linfield Police Academy in February of twenty twenty-five. Uh, she earned a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice from, uh, Southern New Hampshire University and a Master of Science degree in criminology from Merrimack College. Uh, Officer Dulucia passed all portions of the background process, uh, without incident, did great, and I'm proud to present Marissa to be recognized as a full-time police officer, and, uh, we are super lucky, as already mentioned, to have her a part of our team.
You solemnly swear that you will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the Town of Wenham, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police officer to the best of your ability.
And now Officer Brian Pratt. So Brian is up here, uh, with his, uh, wife Kelly, and unfortunately, his, uh, son Braden and daughter Emily weren't able to make it, they were out of state, but I know they are here in spirit. Um, so, thank you, Kelly, for coming to help the cause. Now Brian has been a reserve police officer for twenty years. For probably the last five or six, the deputy have been, and I have been beating down his door to take the next step, to, to make that full-time commitment. And when, when he approached us, when this vacancy, uh, presented itself and said that he was interested in doing that, I, I couldn't have been happier. Universally, across the board, from our other police officers and from neighboring police departments, I can't even tell you how many times I've been approached by people that heard Brian was going full-time and how happy they were because of his character, because of his work ethic, because of how he represents himself in this agency, and because of his interaction, uh, with the, uh, members of the community. Uh, even, uh, Chief Lovell, the Danvers Chief, where Brian's worked for quite some time now, you know, he's like, it's obvious, it makes sense, this is a natural move for him. He says, I'm not happy because I don't want to lose him, but I'm certainly happy because it, it makes absolute sense. So, uh, to stand before you with this, uh, at this time, to have Brian making that leap, um, I can't tell you how happy I am, uh, to be able to, to stand before you guys. Um, when, uh, this vacancy presented itself, as mentioned, uh, Brian, uh, was selected as a incredible candidate, um, from Danvers, Massachusetts. He's been a Wenham Reserve Officer for over twenty years now. Uh, Brian's also been a full-time dispatcher for the Danvers Police Department for fifteen years, having served in a supervisory capacity since twenty seventeen. Prior to working in Danvers, uh, Officer Pratt was a full-time dispatcher in Hamilton for ten years. Uh, while in Wenham, uh, he's been a dedicated member of the department, conducting himself professionally and representing the Wenham Police Department in the best possible light. Officer Pratt, uh, Pratt passed all portions of the background process. If he didn't, we would have had a problem, since he's worked here for twenty years, but I would have had some explaining to do. Uh, it's an absolute understatement to say how happy I am to have Brian, as mentioned, finally make this, uh, this next leap. I am respectfully, uh, requesting Brian Pratt be formally approved tonight, uh, to, for a full-time hire as a Wenham full-time police officer with a, uh, formal start date of Sunday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-six.
They appointed him full-time?
Not Brian yet, so we...
Right, so they have to point him before?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So, we're, we're a little out of order, so I don't know.
Point him now and then he can get sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna, um, entertain a motion to appoint Brian Pratt as a full-time officer of the Wenham Police Department. It's, do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Karen?
Of course, yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Bennet's yes, congratulations again, and the swearing in.
I just want to thank everybody again for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here tonight. It, it means a lot to these officers and to us, without a doubt. You have to stay for the whole Select Board meeting now, if, if you don't, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So I'll, um, move for a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, everyone's in favor.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, chief, I missed your call, there were, we were swearing, um, oh, okay, all right, yeah, we're just out of five-minute recess, so you have plenty of time.
Thank you.
Hey, how's it going, Deirdre?
Good.
New town meeting, huh?
Yeah.
I know.
Was it here or just...
Yeah?
When I first drove in, I, my stomach was, I thought we double booked, like, we were double booked.
Why do you think that?
I was like, oh, no.
I did.
Michelle, do you have that, um, student population by Street or Dammington?
What meeting did we look at?
I think it'll be an email.
No Wenham vote?
It would have been two meetings ago, Monday.
Do you like to, might unpark like a different day or...
One meeting before the holiday.
Oh, no.
I forgot to, to have that, I forgot to put that in the packet.
Call this here, Steve? Student by Street?
Yeah.
Will we send this to Michelle?
Yeah, send it to Michelle, they just have that ready to pull up if we need to, and I see if that, plus the roof, if we can pull it up.
Just send it to Michelle.
Yeah, right. Could, yeah, it could have been fireworks, or luckily, it's just a happy thing. I drove in, I was like, oh, no, I thought we got double booked, like, the school had something else going on in the room, because I pulled in and like, there was no parking, all the people in here, I'm like, oh, shit. What's that? Yeah, I was gonna kick open a door.
Yes, I do.
The Select Board, but there's...
Air Force first, here you go. Congratulations, Karen.
Uh, Kira, congratulations. I already sent it in. Yeah, yeah. Air Force beat it, Air Force now, Air Force... And it's now, it's 48, 26, and, oh my God, I missed that.
He's all set, he's here. She got me, she...
Why are you crying? Why were you crying?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. By all the, by the flowers and...
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
How are you, sir?
Good, I'm doing well. Happy New Year. Did you have a good New Year holiday?
Yeah, I did, too.
Excellent, yeah.
Anthony!
Okay, yeah. Don't children...
Anthony!
Very good. (laughing) You got little ones, or...
Anthony, Joseph, Anthony, Anthony Princey. Y'all stop getting games out. Anthony, Anthony, hurry up!
Five, my son, twenty.
Okay. Is it your daughter or your son?
My son.
Our kid, she's in the picture.
Oh, my daughter, yeah, my daughter.
Yeah, my, my oldest, basically, her jobs are like, it's all works for me, it's like a whole, and then she lives in, like, she does like, or, it's kind of like, you know, like...
Sure.
Oh, my, yeah, she, she's still...
Yeah, yeah, um, uh, I'll send you, like, I'll send you some, my daughter, Jack.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's less hot now, so, um, she went, she went...
Any other fish or...
She's sort of like, for the public, she's, but she's in...
I don't want a little...
There you go, yeah.
She's an entertainment boy, she's, oh, cool, she's like, Anaheim, she's in Anaheim, like, picking her, so she's into that, and Rodney is a bar owner.
Can I take one more out?
I came right for it.
I love you. Absolutely. So the car keys, take the car keys, unlock the car, get the stuff from Whole Foods, and then leave the keys in the car, do not lock it, because I do not have keys, they're the only keys I have. No, Dad's coming right from work. Got it?
Congratulations to her.
Yeah, right?
I don't know what's wrong with the.
Yeah, yeah, I think he's.
She's so excited to be here.
They need some ground up, mint cookies on top of it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, Dana and I talked about it.
Their football team's doing great here.
Yeah.
And then he came back for me.
Yeah.
Awesome.
No, wait, oh wow, they're rivals now.
It was a water.
Because they lost, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, company.
Oh, yeah.
It's like his air quality was his.
Air quality, yeah.
No, when I sent that email to her, I kind of, I knew a lot of that history, but.
He's been on air quality tensions for like, four years, four, five years.
He looked at his like, he's unbelievable.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, it sounds like it's kind of bad.
Just because you're smart doesn't mean you're a good guy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hello, sir, how are you? Oh, I want to give you a hug.
Yeah, I think all of you.
Good, I'm good, a little bit, okay.
Not good.
I'm like a winter wonder.
That's a change every February.
Right, 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 right.
We should, we should have opened up a space.
I don't know why they got it, it's huge.
Yeah, Jim must be loving it.
No, no, we're lucky to have you.
Abs, you should ask Diane how Mallory is.
Hi, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Shows, you know, how old she is.
Good.
Congratulations.
Wish they got it by, but.
Yeah, oh Chargers, Chargers.
On the website, that's what it says, so I think that's probably right. For some reason, my spreadsheet doesn't say that, but.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'll confirm for sure tomorrow.
I hope so.
I hope so.
Maybe Buffalo's on second one after the topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, feel free to, oh, I got some, yeah, yeah, read my mind.
Putting on her list, what it's both about.
Yeah.
First three years.
She was like, what?
No, I'm pretty sure.
Although I do find.
What's your least, I say, you know?
Yeah.
Just the quiet, no, 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 can't, can't, nothing.
One vote, one vote.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do an exit interview, or if you want somebody else to do it, if you feel like that's, whatever. I'll look at some questions online, like.
That's one of the worst ones.
I wonder if Deirdre, I mean, Deirdre might have the time to do it, but she's probably, she's the most kind of invested in like, HR.
Need another.
Call balls or what have you. I haven't talked to her about it, I don't know whether that would be the right choice.
He said to me, I feel like we could, I mean, part of it was.
Yeah.
We have like, he doesn't seem to want to go anywhere anyway.
Are they all going somewhere now? Is there like, a party or is it?
Yeah.
Having trouble getting into people.
Sure.
The one thing that I think that.
Is this their first stop, or is this a?
Quite a lot, I think, I need the boards, chairs.
What's up, man?
Or families, or friends.
Yes, please.
You know, he, he said a couple times, he struggles to find.
Okay.
Okay.
We can talk.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to reconvene the meeting. So, next on the agenda is public input,
public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to?
It's your school.
Speak on an issue that is not otherwise on the agenda? I don't see any, and this is, this is a hybrid, right? It's not a hybrid meeting?
It is.
Oh, it is. Anybody on Zoom?
Sorry, Ben, did we give the thumbs up to H W Cam?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It is a hybrid, yeah, no, no one online.
Okay. All right, seeing that there are no public comments either in the room or on Zoom, we will move now to the Town Administrator's Update and Town Announcements.
He needs a twist.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, a couple updates tonight. Just want to let, let folks know that, like, every year, the DPW runs a Christmas tree recycling at Pingery Park.
Steve?
Yep.
I can't even hear you.
I'll just give it, I think, give it another minute.
Can you just say we're going to resume?
What's up?
I'm so sorry to be here.
All right, resuming the meeting. Steve, if you could please give the Town Administrator's
Update.
Yep, sure. So, every year, the DPW runs a Christmas tree recycling program. It's at Pingery Park, and this allows residents to dispose of their Christmas trees, or wreaths, so you can bring them down to Pingery Park anytime between now and the 23rd of January. The CPC is meeting and going over applications for, and requests for funding through the Community Preservation Act. They meet tonight, actually, as we speak, and next Thursday, the 13th, next Tuesday, excuse me, the 13th, they'll be reviewing applications. Reminder that winter parking is in effect. It remains in effect till March 31st. That means that there is no on-street parking for more than one hour between midnight and 6:00 a.m. I'm happy to report that we've extended an offer, and it was received, to a driver operator at the, in the DPW, Gary Bramford, and this is pending a physical and drug screen, which is consistent with our hiring practices. I also want to make the board aware that our energy consultant, Vicky Misson, was just recognized and awarded a recognition award in celebration of her sustainability and clean energy work. This is through the Haley Driscoll administration, through the Commonwealth. And, you know, Vicky has worked, works for Hamilton and Wenham in the same capacity, we share her, and, you know, she's, she has really helped facilitate getting the HVAC project done with the $500,000 Green Communities Grant. She's received the town hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy efficiency upgrades over the, over, you know, the four or five years that I've been here. She's, you know, been instrumental in exploring our solar options, including the solar array that is likely to end up at the Iron Rail Facility, moving us towards our net zero goal. You know, it's interesting, it's something we want to, you know, I want to point out that, you know, in talking to Vicky, and also, you know, through our discussions with the various state agencies as we promote these projects and look for funding sources, that, you know, really not a lot of communities are doing this. There's a lot of communities that have made the commitment to pursue net zero, but the, you know, the logistics of actually doing so can be cumbersome and difficult, and Wenham has, you know, made great strides in that, in, in large part to Vicky Misson, so, you know, thank you, Vicky, for, for all your hard work. And that's all I have for the updates tonight.
Thanks, Steve. On December 22nd, the town was notified by the Municipal Division of the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office that our 3A bylaw was approved by, by that office. It did make one not unexpected amendment to, to the bylaw, but that has been officially approved at that level. We await review and hopefully approval by the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, and once that occurs, then the 3A bylaw will be officially in place. It took a little bit longer, some people may have read that Hamilton's 3A bylaw was approved, I think, in October or November. It took a little bit longer at the AG level, and I think perhaps also at the State Housing Department level for Wenham, because there was a, a property owner abutting one of the parcels that's been designated as a multifamily housing parcel, who certainly within, totally within his rights, had an attorney submit a letter with some concerns and comments that the reviewers at the state had to work through, so it took a little bit longer to get that approval. But that is good news, and a, again, a testament to all of the staff, Steve, Joe, Kate Mallory, Margaret Hoffman, and others who worked very hard to get the 3A zoning proposal over the finish line. That's all I have. Gary?
I'll just say, Happy New Year to all, and thank you to all the citizens that had a safe Christmas holiday. I think we did very well. And to those that provide a lot of decorations and lights. And I'll point out, my favorite was on Arbor Street there, Steve Natalie Kavanaugh.
Indeed.
All right.
She does a good job.
She does.
Deirdre?
So, on, this is a great night for awards, and I want to add congratulations to Vicky Missoni, and thank her for all of her efforts on behalf of Wenham. It's a tremendous accomplishment. I also would like to recognize Wenham resident Patrick Crockett, who is a high school student at the Essex Tech. On December 3rd, Cadet Captain Patrick Crockett earned the Amelia Earhart Award, one of the most prestigious and challenging honors in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. Patrick is part of the Beverly Composite Squadron of the Civil Air Patrol. Fewer than 5% of CAP cadets nationwide ever earn this award, making it a rare and significant accomplishment. The award marks a cadet's promotion to the rank of Cadet Captain, a Senior Officer Leadership Position within the program. To reach this milestone, cadets must demonstrate excellence in leadership, aerospace education, physical fitness, and character development, along with successfully completing rigorous written testing and leadership evaluations. I'd like to congratulate Patrick Crockett, and he was also featured in the H W News, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Peter?
Karen? I just wanted to congratulate the community house for a successful kickoff to the Ski Bradford Program. Lindsay Konos and the team over there have done an amazing job. I had the luxury of chaperoning the first night last night, which was successful. Everyone came home safe and on time, so I look forward to the next six weeks of skiing and having over 100 kids participate in a great program.
Thank you. That moves us to our consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Item A pertains to the Hamilton Wenham Regional High School's annual tradition of placing placards along Route 1A for the approximately 109 graduating seniors scheduled to graduate this coming spring. And item B are open session meeting minutes from November 4th, November 13th, and November 18th of 2025. Is there any member of the board who wishes to have either of those things pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda in a single motion.
Move to approve items A through B in the consent agenda as printed in this evening's agenda.
Gary seconds.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Congratulations to Mr. Wilson, and that will now bring us to item D, discussion and potential vote to grant Massachusetts Electric Company.
It's part of C.
Oh, C and D are together?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving to E. All right, my, I'm sorry.
Proclamation.
All right, so we're, C and D are together, but we have to wait until 7:00 p.m. because involves a, a hearing. So, item E, discussion and potential vote to sign the 2025 Arbor Day Tree Proclamation.
Yep, so every year that we are designated a Tree City USA. of the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office that our 3A bylaw was approved by that office. It did make one not unexpected amendment to, to the bylaw, but that has been officially approved at that level. We await review and hopefully approval by the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, and once that occurs, then the 3A bylaw will be officially in place. It took a little bit longer. Some people may have read that Hamilton's 3A bylaw was approved, I think, in October or November. It took a little bit longer at the AG level, and I think perhaps also at the State Housing Department level for Wenham, because there was a property owner abutting one of the parcels that's been designated as a multifamily housing parcel, who certainly within, totally within his rights, had an attorney submit a letter with some concerns and comments that the reviewers at the state had to work through, so it took a little bit longer to get that approval. But that is good news, and again, a testament to all of the staff, Steve, Joe, Kate Mallory, Margaret Hoffman, and others who worked very hard to get the 3A zoning proposal over the finish line. That's all I have. Gary?
I'd just say Happy New Year to all, and thank you to all the citizens that had a safe Christmas holiday. I think we did very well, and to those that provide a lot of decorations and lights. And I'd point out, my favorite was on Arbor Street there, Steve Natalie Kavanaugh.
Indeed.
She does a good job.
She does. So, on, this is a great night for awards, and I want to add congratulations to Vicky Missoni, and thank her for all of her efforts on behalf of Wenham. It's a tremendous accomplishment. I also would like to recognize Wenham resident Patrick Crockett, who is a high school student at the Essex Tech. On December 3rd, Cadet Captain Patrick Crockett earned the Amelia Earhart Award, one of the most prestigious and challenging honors in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. Patrick is part of the Beverly Composite Squadron of the Civil Air Patrol. Fewer than 5% of CAP cadets nationwide ever earn this award, making it a rare and significant accomplishment. The award marks a cadet's promotion to the rank of Cadet Captain, a Senior Officer leadership position within the program. To reach this milestone, cadets must demonstrate excellence in leadership, aerospace education, physical fitness, and character development, along with successfully completing rigorous written testing and leadership evaluations. I'd like to congratulate Patrick Crockett, and he was also featured in HW News, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Peter? Karen?
I just wanted to congratulate the community house for a successful kickoff to the Ski Bradford Program. Lindsay Konos and the team over there have done an amazing job. I had the luxury of chaperoning the first night last night, which was successful. Everyone came home safe and on time, so I look forward to the next six weeks of skiing and having over 100 kids participate in a great program.
Thank you. That moves us to our consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Item A pertains to the Hamilton Wenham Regional High School's annual tradition of placing placards along Route 1A for the approximately 109 graduating seniors scheduled to graduate this coming spring. And item B are open session meeting minutes from November 4th, November 13th, and November 18th of 2025. Is there any member of the board who wishes to have either of those things pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Seeing, non-entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda in a single motion.
Move to approve items A through B and the consent agenda as printed in this evening's agenda.
Gary seconds.
We'll take a roll call vote. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Thank you. All right, that moves us to...
Here, we can do B. The second part of B.
Okay, great.
So just the motion down to Cory Check effective today, January 6th.
Okay, the appointment and the...
Yeah.
So, item B is discussion of an appointment of Michael J. Wilson to the position of probationary firefighter, pending a physical, and Cory Check and Chief Kavanaugh is here. Would you like to speak to that, chief?
Michael Wilson comes to us from the city of Beverly, lives close to Beverly Hospital. He's 24 years old, and he's already a certified EMT, which is gonna be great for the ambulance. So I'd like to hopefully get him appointed tonight.
Great. Sounds like an excellent addition. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to appoint Michael J. Wilson to the position of prob, sorry, probationary firefighter, pending a physical, and Cory Check effective today, January 6th, 2026.
Gary seconds.
We have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Congratulations to Mr. Wilson, and that will now bring us to item D, discussion and potential vote to grant Massachusetts Electric Company...
It's part of C.
Oh, C and D are together?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving to E. All right, my, I'm sorry. All right, so we're, C and D are together, but we have to wait until 7:00 PM because it involves a hearing. So, item E, discussion and potential vote to sign the 2025 Arbor Day Tree Proclamation.
Yep, so every year that we are designated a Tree City USA, and as part of that, the requirements of this designation, the Select Board needs to sign and make a Arbor Day Tree Proclamation. We planted the tree at the grand opening of West Wenham Park, and this here is the annual proclamation that the town makes. It's not super clear, unfortunately. Yeah. Can we try zooming in enough that we can, yeah, I think that's, here we go. Not sure if one of the board members wants to read it, or I'm happy to read it. Want me to read it? All right. "Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with its planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious top soils by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our town increase property values and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, the Wenham Select Board, hereby proclaim October 18th, 2025, as Arbor Day, and we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this day, January 6th, 2026."
Thank you. Does someone want to make a motion?
Move to sign the 2025 Arbor Day Tree Proclamation.
Second.
Take a roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Why does that say 2025 on it?
It is because we make the proclamation when we send in the certification, which is for 2025. We did clarify that with Kate in the Arbor Day, and that is, that is correct. The 2025 date is correct.
Got it.
All right. It is 6:53. We'll move on to item F, which is our town clerk to present a memo on a number of different election-related topics. And dog registration, and a few other things. And dog registration, and a few other things.
Oh, of course, yes, it's January. I have a lot to say, but I'll try to say it quickly so I don't make you late. The memo in the packet had a couple errors that I'll go over in just a minute, but in general, Happy New Year to everybody. January is always a busy time in the clerk's office with a number of important announcements that I'd like to briefly highlight this evening. First of all, for all residents, the state-mandated annual census forms will be arriving in mailboxes in the next few weeks. The form is very straightforward. Please review it and be sure all your household residents are listed, then sign and return it to my office as soon as possible. Residents can return the forms by mail, scan them to an email, or drop them off at Town Hall. Next, for our dog owners, resident dog owners, by law, dogs must be registered annually, and in Wenham, January is Dog Registration Month, as our year goes from January to December. Dogs may be registered online at the town clerk's counter or by mail. The fee is $15 for neutered or spayed dogs and $20 for unneutered dogs. And for dog owners age 70 and above, there's no charge. For our approximately 33 elected officials, some of whom are sitting right here, the campaign-financed year-end report is due no later than January 20th. And I have a form that you can sign right at the office, and if I was smart, I would have brought it with me, but I forgot. For all of our town of Wenham employees, all of our officials, appointed and elected, and all of our volunteers, the State Ethics Commission has an annual online requirement. Everyone will need to log into the Ethics Commission website to determine whether they are required to complete the training or submit the acknowledgement. I'll send an email tomorrow with all the instructions and would appreciate everyone's timely compliance. If not, the state will send you emails every month. Not me, just that. Almost every week. So now, moving on to my errors and to the 2026 election information, which is all available on the town meeting and town election page of the website. Our annual town meeting has been moved to the second Saturday in April due to Easter, and will be held at 1:00 on Saturday, April 11th, and the annual town election will take place on the following Thursday, April 16th, 2026, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The seats that are appearing on the annual town election ballot include, this is where the error is, three planning board seats, one library trustee seat, four school committee seats, two select board seats, and one water commission seat. So that's 10, 10 seats. At this time, I'm requesting a select board vote to place these 10 seats on the April 16th, 2026 annual town election ballot. Do you think we could do that?
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect? I'll move to, move to place the 10 positions just outlined by Clerk Buco that are up for election in 2026 on the spring 2026 ballot.
Gary seconds.
We'll take a roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes.
Thank you so much. For anyone interested in running for any of these 10 positions, nomination papers will be available at my office beginning Monday, January 12th, which is next Monday. And lastly, due to the requirements of the Votes Act, I'm requesting the Select Board to vote to delegate the authority for assigning police details for all 2026 elections to the police chief in consultation with the town clerk, because that's in the law now. Would you be interested in doing that, too?
I'm sure I'd entertain a motion.
So that...
Want me to repeat that?
Yeah, so it's...
That the Select Board delegate the authority for assigning police details for all 2026 elections to the police chief in consultation with the town clerk.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a roll call vote. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ben is yes.
Perfect. So, and with that, I'm happy to answer. Are there any questions, if anyone has?
Any questions from the board?
What other elections this year for the public?
So, in the fall, we will have a, the state primary, which will be the Monday, September 3rd. I think that's before Labor Day. Is that possible? Gosh, I should have had that ready. So we'll have the state primary in September and the state election, which includes the governor's race and many ballot questions on November, the first Tuesday in November.
I think the, there's a open congressional seat in the 6th district this year, and that's probably on the same calendar. Is that right? A primary in September and a...
Yes.
And the November general election?
Yes. September 1st. September 1st. Thank you.
Oh, it's early, yeah. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Next, Ty.
All right, it is just about 7:00, and we have on the agenda, item C, Select Board in the town of Wenham will hold a public hearing related to the petition by Mass Electric Company Doing Businesses National Grid and Verizon New England of 1101 Turnpike Street North End over Mass to consider a request to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along the following public way. Maple Street, National Grid to relocate one JO pole on Maple Street, beginning at a point approximately 935 feet plus or minus southwest of the centerline of the intersection of Puritan Road and continuing five feet plus or minus in a southwesterly direction, and then installation of another JO pole, number 113-1, and all appurtenances in Maple Street, Wenham. And I think we have a National Grid representative or representatives to discuss this.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kazadi, and I'm representing National Grid at 44 River Street in Beverly. And, yeah, so we're petitioning to install one pole, pole 113-1, between existing poles 114 and 113, to use that pole as a tap point for primary, and we'll run that primary, and to tap off, sorry, tap out that pole with primary to feed power to the new development going in a central circle.
Great.
What is the timeframe for doing the work?
So, um, once it goes through the petition process, it's, a job like this would take about three weeks for our guys to get out there, do the work.
We will open this matter up for public comment, if there are any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to be heard on this proposal.
No one on to, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Great. Was that everything, or...?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Yes. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm John Jenkins. I'm the new designer for Wenham, so I'll be involved in the majority of the work to come, and will be here for any petition coming up.
Excellent. Welcome.
Just wanted to introduce myself.
Appreciate you doing that.
Yep.
Thanks for coming, and I look forward to seeing you and working with you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, discussion and potential vote to grant Mass Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England permission to conduct the pole work that was just presented.
Okay. Move to grant Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Businesses as National Grid and Verizon New England permission to conduct pole work to relocate one JO pole on Maple Street, beginning at a point approximately 930 feet southwest of the centerline of the intersection of Puritan Road and continuing approximately five feet in a southwesterly direction, installation of one JO pole, 113-1, and all appurtenances in Maple Street, Wenham, Mass. O1984.
Gary seconds.
A roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. All right, thank you very much. Gentlemen, appreciate your time, and I would entertain a motion, thank you, Gary, to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. And that moves us to item G, discussion and potential vote to sign a letter to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Planning, and Support for Designating the USBR 1 through 1.
I move to approve and sign a letter to Massachusetts. Do we want to discuss?
I think just let Steve explain it.
Do you want to say anything about that, Steve, or...?
Um, this is the cycling route. Yeah, so this was, this was the presentation that the board heard at our last meeting, and the, reviewed the draft letter and voted to have it finalized and bring to a vote at this meeting to have the letter signed by the board and sent on behalf of the town.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Questions from the public? And Peter, do you want to read that motion?
Move to approve and sign a letter to Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Planning and Support for Designating USBR 1 through Wenham.
Gary seconds.
Roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Now that moves us to item H, discussion and potential vote on updates to the snow removal policy. Do you want to start that off, Steve?
Yeah, sure. So, a working group at the request of the board convened one time, a couple, actually, probably about a month ago now, it was comprised of Select Board member Karen Anger, member Peter Clay, Joe Passamato, myself, Rich Souza, our DPW director, Eric Tracy, Superintendent of Schools, Michelle McGovern, Executive Assistant. And, you know, we worked through the snow removal current policy, in which the current policy effectively states that the, the road snow removal and the, it gets priority, and once the snow, once the roads are deemed safe for passage by the DPW director, he breaks off labor at his discretion to start the clearing of sidewalks, where he initially targets the ADA walking route that surrounds the Bukeur School that we're in tonight as first priority, and then works systematically out in what he deems to be the most efficient way possible from, you know, kind of the center, working towards the outskirts of town. The working group was set up to take a look at that, to see if there were any improvements that could be done, given some concerns that were raised during the snowstorms last year about children, you know, having to walk in the roads or being unable to get to their bus stop due to snow being on the sidewalks. So we, we did discuss that, and the group in general supported a recommendation of Select Board members Anger and Clay to, you know, continue to prioritize the downtown, or the ADA walking route around the Bukeur School, and then move operations to the end of Topsfield Road and work in that way. And in addition to that, Rich has spent probably what we, if last year was to repeat itself, he's dedicated about $10,000 of existing funds in his snow and ice removal budget that will work with a contractor that has a trackless machine, which is the machine that drives around and clears your snow off the sidewalks, and he has also spent about another $10,000 equipping, equipping a skid steer that is already owned by the town to conduct snow operations, although not as efficient as a trackless machine. It certainly is better than nothing. So, we're looking at, you know, roughly, you know, again, labor is always, you know, kind of the bottleneck as labor is available roughly three times the snow clearing capacity than we've had in years past. We, we also did want to note that, you know, looking at towns around us, there was discussion in the working group of what can we learn from surrounding towns. We did look at all the towns bordering Wenham, and they all have, you know, some sort of bylaw or city ordinance that requires the snow, that the, the person who lives in the home that has the sidewalk in front of them, that's their, ultimately their responsibility to clean the snow off it. And although do all five communities, I believe, that border Wenham, do have a snow removal policy where they do snowplow the sidewalks in limited capacity, however, none of them clear them to the extent that Wenham does, and that we do all the sidewalks in town, including on the side roads, not just the business district and the surrounding schools. With that, I'll turn the discussion over to the Select Board.
Thank you. Karen and Peter, given that you were on the working group, do, would one of you like to speak next about the recommendation for a change in sidewalk priorities?
Yeah, the one thing that we didn't dive into, and we said that we would continue our conversations through the working group, was the situation of whether or not individuals should be required to clear the snow directly in front of their property. That was something that we kind of tabled. The first working group session was really focused on the safety of the sidewalks from a school and children walking on highways perspective. We took a look at 97 specifically, as well as Route 1, I'm sorry, 1A, and taking a look at how...
on the working group, um, rationale for prioritizing Topsfield Road or Route ninety-seven clearance over, um, Main Street, One A? Um, like, why, why would one be prioritized over the other?
So, on a couple of different occasions, last year, the police had to be called because kids were walking on ninety-seven, they, in the opposite direction, to be able to not only get to the, um, school bus, but also, once the school bus dropped them off, to be able to then work their way home. Um, and that is a, a massive safety issue, and that's really where Eric was able to jump in and say, um, you know, whether or not it was the, the bus or the police or, or where the, the focus lied. But, um, as far as Topsfield Road goes, the DPW did not have enough, correct me if I'm wrong, truly did not have enough gas to get to the top of the road. So, they were not actually servicing anything after, um, after William Fairfield.
It broke a sharepin and had to go back to get repaired.
Right, so it wasn't being done at all. And so what's happening is because their priority was not, um, Topsfield Road at all, they couldn't make it out after William Fairfield, so it was just never done.
And that section of, uh, Topsfield Road is the highest speed limit in, in the town? Forty.
Okay. Uh, but you, you were saying, Steve, that that particular incident that Karen mentioned, was there equipment failure that occurred once?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we have the, uh, the dra, the draft policy or the policy up?
Right there.
I mean, the conversation with the DPW, too, was, there was no, um, false assumption that, you know, one inch or two inches of snow was going to have them come out. But what was happening is, is that when you have five or six days of two or three inches of snow that now turn into ice, we've got kids walking on ninety-seven.
Right.
Karen, um, correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think one of the other things we thought, talked about was, um, given the changes, um, that the DPW is putting into effect, we need to have a, like a four to five inch snow and see how it works.
Peter's right. We actually said, once this was implemented, that the working group would continue to work throughout the sea, throughout the season and throughout the year to regulate and see, see what works and what isn't.
But we really don't have to meet again until we have a significant snow incident. Otherwise, we're just...
Gary, did you want to?
Can we scroll down to where it talks about the phases?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right there. So, I would suggest, just for, uh, future reference, that, uh, perhaps we need the word municipal wherever we put parking area in there, just so that it's clear that we're just doing municipal work. And likewise, um, on roads, I know we have different policies on maintenance and so forth. Do we need to elaborate a little bit? Any differentiation on priorities between public roads and those, uh, other un, perhaps unaccepted or private roads?
Um, yeah, I, I think it's not, Steve, we can add that in the policy. It's not stated in this policy, but there...
It appears in other policies.
It appears in other policies about plowing the private, that they are...
Right.
Yeah, I agree. I will add that. Municipal parking clarification.
And, uh, while we're at plowing and so forth, uh, you know, we encourage people to, uh, do some of their own work, but, uh, what's the status on the requirements to do fire hydrants in front of your property?
We have no...
We have no requirement right now. All right. That's perhaps something that the committee ought to look at, too.
Which is what?
Water department does.
Yes. Water Department clears the hydrants.
Too high, then they ask us to...
Yeah, so...
In the D P, yeah, I think it's a, sounds like a group effort, right? You know, I see Brendan out there doing the, uh, fire hydrants, too.
The, uh, phase four, when it gets down to particular speed, streets, was just a, is that a carryover from prior years?
We did not dive into that in the working group. Doesn't mean we won't. It, that wasn't...
Is I just going to suggest that perhaps we ought to look at that list at some point, given the density of, uh, or changing, uh, development around town? I'm sure that's from a long time ago.
And just because this particular document is a summary of, of the current policy, right?
Yeah.
And the, your memo is a summary of what the working group proposes as potential changes to this?
Yeah, I mean, generally, the working group didn't look at, it was, the working group really was, was set up and focused discussion around sidewalks specifically. We didn't cover streets. I think it was generally accepted and understood that streets got first priority, that, you know, that clearing the streets and making sure public safety can get where they need to go timely and safely to, you know, in the event of an emergency, took first priority. And once Rich determined that the roads were clear enough for safe passage, that he could start pulling off some manpower, um, that he would then start the, um, sidewalks. That, I think, was universally agreed to, and it was really just focused on, once the sidewalk operations were started, the concern were, or A, it took too long to do the entire town, so that Rich, you know, is trying to provide a solution to that, and again, we'll have to test it this year because the manpower is, is the bottleneck, but he has contracted with a vendor that has a trackless that has said, you know, probably within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of the ending of the storm, his trackless will be free to shift to, uh, Wenham operations to assist in clearing the sidewalks, along with Wenham's, uh, self-operated trackless machine. And then, you know, probably a number of days after the storm, given the significant, you know, it, depending on the significance of the storm, because with two machines already out there, they may already be done, but if a third machine is needed, then we can set up, send out the Bobcat Skid Steer that has been converted, uh, for snow operations, such as in closing the cab, um, there's some different tires for, you know, right now it has agricultural tires that are more suited for dirt work, and it'll have street appro, uh, road, uh, excuse me, snow appropriate, snow and ice appropriate tires, and a snow blower on the front of it. And, um, so really, the, the focus of the conversation was, you know, that the time, which we believe, we have addressed the time issue with additional machinery, assuming we can get the labor, that remains to be seen, but that, that, that's the idea. And then, uh, the group, you know, everybody had understood that the schools needed to get first priority as far as clearing of the ADA walking route, uh, around the schools, immediately adjacent to the schools, and then where, or the, really, the question was, is where, is what Rich is looking for feedback from us? And again, I, you know, and I just want to flag this as, you know, I think the board wants to consider that it does want to remain flexible in the policy, so that the DPW has the flexibility to make the judgment call, given, you know, every storm is a little bit different, uh, and he's kind of out in the thick of it and understanding where, you know, where, where the pressure points are and what needs to be addressed before, but basically, once the school is done, where do we direct the attention? You know, is there a priority in town that, you know, we want to shift all our resources? Because again, probably that first twenty-four hours after the storm is going to still be that one trackless machine, because it's going to still be guys on the plow. Backup trackless is going to be another, another community where it's already under contract, uh, and we're not going to have the guys, because they're in the plow trucks to run the Bobcat. So, where does that one trackless go for that first twelve or twenty-four hours that it's likely going to be out by itself doing sidewalks? Um, and the proposal was to go to Top, Topsfield Line, out on Topsfield Road, and work its way backwards.
Hmm. Um, any other members of the board wish to comment on this?
Yeah, but go ahead. Go ahead, Ben.
Oh, no, you go. I'll, I'll, you can go first.
I mean, I, I'm hearing a few different things. It sounds like, so last year, we had equipment problems, labor shortages.
Yeah, well, the, the equipment problem is normal, like the sharepins on these machines break with some frequency when you get a ice chunk. So, it's not uncommon for it to happen, you know, a few times a winter. So, it's really not a big shutdown they made to be replaced. It does have to go back to the shop because it's a substantial piece of machinery, uh, but, to be replaced, but it's not a big repair. It's probably replaced in twenty minutes, and then it's back out on the road.
I guess my concern is, I'm not sure the Select Board should be dictating exactly where, which street in which order should be done. I mean, I think, you know, the, the concerns have been raised about last year. I think Rich has heard them. There are changes underway to address the issues. I mean, I think we should see how those changes play out in the event of a snow emergency or situation, before we go to the point of dictating it should be here, 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 because, you know, I just don't think that that's our job to be dictating at that level, um, what a department head does to manage, you know, that's why we have professionals here, and he's in the situation and in the thick of it, and we're not. So, that's my hesitation.
Um, I, I agree with that, and, but it, it sounds like the state of play right now, can anyone correct me if I'm wrong, is that at the next snowstorm, that Rich is going to be prepared to, to deploy to Topsfield Road after Bueker, and then that the working group is going to stay formed and sort of assess how that went? Is that a fair statement?
Rick was looking for the board to make that agreement, and then to, for what we said, what did we say, within a couple of days after the next snowstorm, after the Select Board had instituted that initial thought process, that we would then discuss how it went. The working group would work together and, and triage, you know, what, what worked, what didn't, and, and the best route for that. I mean, essentially, what it comes down to is, is that it's a, it was a major safety issue. The reason Eric Tracy was involved is because children need to be able to get to and from school in a safe environment, and, um, I politely disagree with Deirdre to say that, at the end of the day, our job from a Select Board perspective is to ensure the safety of our folks within the town, and if we know that there is an absolute massive problem with children walking up and down streets that have a speed limit of up to forty miles an hour, and we're doing nothing to combat that, I, I don't believe that that is anybody else's responsibility, except for ours.
I agree.
I think we, um, we did...
So, let's, let's just wear what, what we've suggested, see, see how, and see how it works, but we have to have the storm.
Right, well, what I was saying is, I think, I think that, you know, whether or not the board takes a vote to enact a particular policy, even if it's an interim policy that directs the DPW Director to, at the next storm, do X, which I wouldn't support, because I think that level of micromanagement, um, in my opinion, isn't the right way to approach it, but even without that vote, it sounds like he's prepared to, to do that, just, you know, based on the feedback of the working group, and to see how that goes, and then that there would be a reevaluation. Uh, I mean, among the reasons I wouldn't want to try to lock in the DPW into a particular street sequence, is that we've gotten some data from the school department about which streets have the most schoolchildren that live on them, and Topsfield Road is, you know, like fifth or sixth. Larch has thirty, Maple has thirty, Main has twenty-eight, Cherry has twenty-seven, Cedar has twenty-three, and Topsfield Road has twenty. So, there are more schoolchildren on other roads, and I, I recognize that ninety-seven is a, you know, a major roadway with a higher speed limit, but, um...
Well, Ben, to be clear, Topsfield Road also encompasses Puritan, Conrad, because the machine itself will not go past William Fairfield. So, you're talking Mayflower, Puritan, Conrad, Daniels, um, there's, there's not just those specific number of kids on Topsfield, you're talking another twenty or so children on those side roads that have to walk up to the main road.
And I would also say this, that on, on like Maple...
Right.
What's the speed limit? It's twenty-five.
Right.
Topsfield Road, it's forty.
Didn't we, when you said that the machine won't go past William Fairfield, I thought that we had established that it didn't go past William Fairfield one time last season because one of the pins broke. Is that, is there some other obstacle to it?
Yeah, I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding, I believe the, the concern was last year, it got out to William Fairfield, uh, well, out to that, roughly that area. The pin broke, it had to turn around and come back, and then we got another snowstorm, and it kind of reset the cycle of moving out, and that's why the far end of Topsfield Road, from my understanding, went a couple storm cycles, because we had that week where there was like three storms, where it was kind of setting us back to, or Rich back to square one after every storm, and then you'd do the streets, by the time someone got the thing, you'd get the schools done, and then there'd be another storm, and you'd be, you know, because it was every couple of days. Um, that's my understanding of, of, of that. Uh, and again, I might be missing a step in there.
Well, to be clear, it was done once last year, after multiple complaints. It was just done one time.
I think one problem with, um, you know, with designating a street as the top priority is that the lower priority streets at storm number one are going to be, you know, cleared more poorly than the higher priority streets, and then at storms number two and three, those are the streets that are going to need to get cleared more readily than the ones that were given priority the first time through, so I'd, I'd want Rich to have the flexibility to, you know, at storm number three, say, geez, you know, um, Cedar Street really hasn't, we haven't been able to get to Cedar Street in the earlier storms, and there's already, you know, a, a two inches of ice frozen on the sidewalks, so we probably should go and clear those. So, I think it goes to the, the flexibility point and the, um, you know, the interest in giving the DPW the ability to manage the streets. Um, but, like I said, personally, I, I, if, if the plan is that at the next storm, Topsfield Road's going to be done right after Bueker, I certainly have no issue with that, and especially if the working group, which I know has only met one time, um, plans to meet again to assess how that went, and get Rich's feedback and Eric Tracy's feedback, to the extent that he's, has the time to, um, devote to this, um, then that makes sense, and I don't know that it requires any action by the Select Board right now, but that's just my view.
I think some, some support from the board for that directive would be helpful, possibly even a vote, just because we did get concerns, or we get concerns every storm about who, who gets prioritized and how, uh, if the machine drives by their house, that's, and it's not on the sidewalk, doing the sidewalk, you know, we've gotten calls almost every storm as to why, you know, it's out driving around, I see it driving around, why is it not doing my sidewalk? Um, so just, again, just something from a staffer's perspective to be like, you know, the Select Board is prioritizing... Cedar Street really hasn't, we haven't been able to get to Cedar Street in the earlier storms, and there's already, you know, a two inches of ice frozen on the sidewalks. So we probably should go and clear those. So I think it goes to the flexibility point and the, you know, the interest in giving the DPW the ability to manage the streets. But like I said, personally, I, if, if the plan is that at the next storm Topsfield Road is going to be done right after Bukeur, I certainly have no issue with that, and especially if the working group, which I know has only met one time, plans to meet again to assess how that went and get Rich's feedback and Eric Tracy's feedback to the extent that he's, has the time to devote to this, then that makes sense. And I don't know that it requires any action by the select board right now, but that's just my view.
I think some, some support from the board for that directive would be helpful, possibly even a vote, just because we did get concerns, or we get concerns every storm about who gets prioritized and how, if the machine drives by their house and it's not on the sidewalk, doing the sidewalk. You know, we've gotten calls almost every storm as to why, you know, it's out driving around. I see it driving around. Why is it not doing my sidewalk? So just, again, just something from a staffer's perspective to be like, you know, this select board is prioritizing this, you know. Similarly, like the discussion is, you know, the answer has been before. It's, you know, the select board, you know, we have a policy that prioritizes the Bukeur School ADA walking route, uh, walking route first. The DPW are then, at his discretion, work systematically in what he deems to be the most efficient way through the town from there, you know, given the equipment is centralized. Generally, he works from the school out. You know, and that's why sometimes if he's moving equipment around, given priority issues, that's why it might be driving by your house and not plowing your road on its way by. So like similarly, if it does the Bukeur School and then drives down Main Street and down, you know, what is it, Cherry Street down to Topsfield Road, you know, why, why is it going? You know, so we can just say that, you know, it goes to Bukeur School, then it goes to Topsfield Line and works backwards. That's its prioritized route.
So in order to prioritize that part of town, the equipment would have to drive in the street, essentially not clearing sidewalks to get to the endpoint?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't strike me as very efficient. I mean, why wouldn't the machines start from where they are, if that's Bukeur, clear the sidewalks on the way to Topsfield Road and clear Topsfield Road? And, I mean, that, that doesn't seem to make sense to me, to drive past sidewalks on some of these roads and have people wonder why they're driving around town.
The machine does not have the capacity to reach the end of Topsfield Road.
But I thought that was an issue because the machine broke. They don't have the capacity to get-
I'm unaware of that, that it, that's a restriction on the machine.
I mean, they've cleared, they've certainly cleared Maple Street in past years, so they can get past William Fairfield.
Where your house is.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's past William Fairfield.
How much does it cost to buy a second machine? Is that something that, I know we're about to, we're about to talk about our budgetary constraints next, but- If we had two machines, one for West Wenham and one for Resto Salt-
Couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah. Pocket change for the town.
And then the, then the snow blower attachment's probably another 10 or 15, I would guess.
From a safety perspective, I can't imagine that this board wouldn't institute something. If someone truly got hurt in a week and this board didn't act, I would be beside myself. I don't know what would happen.
But the question is, you know, that incident could occur anywhere in town.
Right.
You know, and if you say Topsfield Road, then someone on Dodges Road say, well, it's because you went that way and this way. So I think, you know, the, the way to do this is let DPW manage it. Let do this test run on the next big snowstorm, if we get one this year, and, and let the committee reassess. Yeah, that's, so.
Which is the whole, which is the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think that you-
I don't know what we continue to talk about.
So I think, I think there's a sense of the board that, that as a test run for the next storm, that proceeding to Topsfield Road after Bukeur is acceptable to a majority of the board members. And unless anyone objects to the recap that I just gave, I think that's the message to convey to Rich.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm just going to want to make one more comment. I, I, I'm a little concerned that the suggestion is that we're not concerned about safety. I'm concerned about safety in the entire town for all children on all streets. So, you know, I'm not against safety. I think we all are in favor of safety.
Who's, do you think is not concerned about safety? Of our kids?
I think that was just said. I'm saying I think we are concerned about all the streets, all the sidewalks. But I also think, you know, homeowners do bear some responsibility as well. We all need to be clearing-
Deirdre.
What?
We can't clear all the sidewalks in town. We can't. And if you actually go and look at like Manchester, there are all a bunch of streets that they don't do.
The next conversation-
And they're like half, half the size of our, area-wise, as us. And they got three times the employees in their DPW.
All right, I think we've, I think we've, yeah, we've exhausted this discussion. There's a consensus that has been reached that Steve will convey, and that moves us to item I, review the current status of the town and school budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I'm just going to start off briefly. We have the capital plan in front of you, and I'm not going to go through each, each capital project. But what I do want to do, Michelle, if you could just scroll to the last page where it says highlighted, go up one, right there. So-
Can you, I'm a little old. Can you make it a little bigger?
Really, it's just the bottom line. That bottom line is really all we need to see. So that 622 number, the $622,000, $100,000 is the free cash propos, the, right now, the current estimate of free cash to be raised or to, to be spent on, it's already been raised, but to, to spend on capital improvements. The 344 next to it is we're lucky enough that some pretty relatively large projects fall into what we believe, at least in the select board's office, to fall into the CPC umbrella as an appropriate funding source. So we have these as requests to the CPC. If they decide not to fund any one of these three, which amounts to $350,000, those will likely be shifted into the free cash request, moving that total up to close to a million dollars. And what I wanted to bring, and then, you know, I don't want to ignore the debt exclusion, but that's, that's outside the levy, but there's also likely going to be, the, the school, the high school roof is going to have a debt exclusion article that will, you know, the, the project cost is about $10 million, I believe. And the town will be asked to raise $155,000 of that through debt service annually over 20 years. But really, you know, if you focus in on the 622 and the 344, that's almost a million dollars. And as, now, if you want to go to the, to the budget document. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up is a lot of times, you know, when we go, when you go through budget and you talk about budget shortfalls, if you go to this sheet here, and you talk about budget shortfalls, they'll say, well, we have $2 million in free cash, or we have, you know, whatever amount of money in free cash, so we have money. How can you say we don't have money? So I just want to point out that we spend roughly, you know, $800 to $1 million, maybe $700 to $1 million, given the, the year on capital improvements here in the town of Wenham. Generally, they don't all fit in the CPC box, so they're being raised through free cash. And that represents, that million dollars represents about 4% of our budget. Last year, our certified free cash going to this town meeting, which is reflective of not the year that just closed, but the, on January, July 1 of '25, but the, the year prior to that, was, I think it was about $1.8 million. So that leaves about $800,000, $800,000 left, left. So last year, if you remember, we increased local receipts about 5%. We also forced departments, or not forced, but asked departments, and they were helpful in, you know, trying to accomplish this. We were unable to accomplish this in, in all areas, but we did mostly, was to take any contractually obligated costs and reduce their expenditure line items enough to cover so that the, the expenditures were level funded year over year, regardless of some of the line items going up due to contractual obligations. So what that did is, is it basically ate into existing line items that were, you know, quote unquote, conservatively budgeted in the fact that they were historically somewhat underspent contributing to our free cash number. So we did that so that, now you don't have a free cash number that's reflective of those changes. You don't have a free cash number that's reflective of the increase in the budgets, the, the revenue assumptions. So the likelihood is that free cash is going to further decrease. And this was, this is, this is by design. This was, this was intentional. We're generating about 8% or close to 9% of our annual expenditures in free cash. A draft stated policy goal, and this is, you know, the Department of Revenue, GFOA, these are all best, nationwide best practices, commonwealth best practices, is to target a free cash generation of about 4% to 6%. 4%, like I said before, is, is the million dollars. So for us to continue operating as we do and pay our capital costs and have a small rolling starting fund balance, which is basically the balance of free cash that you don't appropriate at town meeting for emergency purposes, you really need to generate that 5%, right? So we're already at 6 with our adjustments. We're expecting our last year's adjustments to pull us down even more, probably bringing us close to the 5%, which is right smack dab in the middle. But this year, you know, we're looking at a budget. We're looking at a request from the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District that exceeds our, our revenue growth by a million dollars about in the town with the current require, with the current requests, which again, contractually obligated only. Very few non-contractual obligated requests here that we'll talk about in a minute of about $300,000. So, you know, we're way over the levy limit, but we have no control over the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District ask. I mean, you can put pressures and communicate with the school committee, but ultimately, they set the request in town meeting, decides whether they want to fund it or not. What we do have control over is the town expenditures. And really, the discussion I wanted to bring to the select board tonight was not to really make any decisions tonight, but just to illustrate kind of where we are this year. We're roughly $300,000 outside our means, which is about 4% revenue growth. So we're about $300,000 above that. And if the board wants to set a direction that avoids an override from the town, again, you don't want to, we're all in this together, so to speak, so you're not really pitting the schools versus the towns. But, you know, ultimately, I think that the talking point is that, that, you know, that the, the town did what it could to stay within its means and has provided a budget that avoids an override to, for town services specifically in maintained service delivery. You know, if, if the select board wants to avoid, well, this exercise kind of has to be done anyways because right now we're over the levy limit. If you decide to move forward with an override request and it fails, you're going to have to have a supplemental budget that balances. So what we're trying to do here is to have some discussion on what, you know, things we looked, we, things we picked that we feel are minimally impactful as far as a service delivery. You know, starting with Pleasant Pond Gatekeepers, we did a very thorough analysis of that last year or two, or two years ago to show, you know, how lightly utilized that was. And, you know, there isn't a lot of folks that are taking advantage of it. Tickets, I don't know if Diane is still here, but ticket sales or sticker sales to park there continue to decline year over year. You know, usage is trending down since we've done it, not, not up. The ClearGov budget software, this is something that we've been working on for, or really Jeff and his finance team have been working on for close to two years now. And it's getting close to going, going live this year. However, the, the residents have not felt the tool. So, you know, we can, you know, an option is to cut our losses there. You save the $20,000. It's a $20,000 licensing and maintenance fee for the software. We went ahead and modeled what a 1% essentially blind reduction of every department's expenditures line item would look like. And then we have, you know, we, we have some staffing proposals this year, and both the fire chief and police chief here to speak more to this. But the, you know, starting with the fire, the fire has, you know, it's, it's always been a progression, I think, with pretty much any small municipality in, in, around here. It's not, you know, it's kind of, it's not, if you're going to go to a full-time department, it's, it's kind of wen. And the, the communities that have call departments and fire are kind of fight tooth and nail to keep it because of, you know, just the, the cost of going to a full-time firefighter department. So I know that, you know, they're constantly, the, there being the, the fire department, are constantly up against it as far as overtime restrictions and also enticing or getting call firefighters to show up on calls, which then shifts the responsibility on to the full-time firefighters and our chief and deputy chief. So they have asked this year to, you know, add an additional firefighter and additional firefighter overtime, given the trending of the call firefighters, lack of participation in the more reliance on the full-time firefighters who, you know, ultimately would need overtime to fill all, to fill the calls. The other option that we're just putting out on the table, just so the board understands kind of the seriousness of the discussions we're having, is the, we're projecting to try to avoid any existing staffing reductions. The police department has operated for, or will operate for a majority of this fiscal year with nine officers as a result of some, some medical situations that took place and a number of retirements. So they've been effectively one officer down, will be one officer down for the majority of this year. So they've, you know, we expect one more retirement at the end of this year, which will leave a one officer, patrol officer vacant at the start of the fiscal year. So an option there is to unfund that position. The police department has functioned at that level for almost a year at that point. But it has been, and the police will speak more detail about this, but it has been very difficult on the police officers that have had to fill the overtime as a result of the reduction. We have required staffing and shifts. So it, you know, it's not like we can just say, well, we don't have enough guys, so we can't, we're just not going to send one out. We gotta, you gotta, you gotta have the guys and, or the girls as well. And so again, another year of that is certainly a hit on morale. Officers are tired, you know, similar with the firefighters, you're kind of, you can only, can only go on for so long. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that they are under pressures that are kind of almost beyond, you know, monetary. You know, you look at it from a monetary perspective, it's like, well, if they've done it for a year, then they can take, can, can continue to do it. But, you know, it's, it's not really true because it's, they've done it for the year because they, they have to. And I think the hope is that ultimately the ship will kind of right-size itself and can go back to a more traditional working schedule because, you know, I think our guys are tired. But, you know, that's, that's what I wanted to open up as far as discussion. I think this year in particular, given that this is going to be the first year in a long time, that there's going to be, I know, some hard discussions made, not only for the town, but the, the, the school district, if you've been following along with the school committee meetings. They're having similar discussions as this right, as we speak. But to give some direction to the FinCom, at least, you know, not that they may, may not agree with the direction, but to at least, so everybody knows the direction that the select board as the policymaker and, you know, the deliverer of services to the residents of the town, you know, where they're going and what their, where their support is so that we don't get to a point months down the road. And the FinCom has worked, you know, in one direction towards a solution. And the select board, you know, and there, you know, your thoughts have been going another. So, you know, with that, I think- So, you know, with that, I think I'll open it up for comments to the board. If anybody has, has any questions on the spreadsheet. I know I didn't touch on all of it, but I'm not sure it's, that level of detail is needed at this point.
So a couple of clarifications. I couldn't quite hear the Pleasant Pond piece. Did you say the seasonal stickers are declining?
Yes.
So there are fewer sales happening?
Yep.
I guess I'd be curious what the drop is. And then there's implications to that as we heard last year. Can you explain that line item that says budget addition? I don't really understand that disability.
Yeah, so what that is, is, so we, we've kind of added 110, it's, it's an offsetting adjustment. So we've moved 110,000 dollars out of fire and into benefits. That's for the 111F disability. So that, that the individual receiving that gets the, their entire salary until they're retired and move their way to the pension system. So that, that is likely temporary. We don't know if it's one year, two years, three years, or five years. I don't think it'll be that long. But so for that reason, the reduction adjustment, which is why it's not reflected in the, the negative 4,746 at the bottom. Let me scroll down just a little bit, Michelle. So after you account for that, so what we've kind of, we've kind of done here is, what you don't see in the budget adjustments is two things. Stabilization for trash increase. So we've planned, over the last couple of years, we've been putting a little extra into the stabilization with the understanding that we're, well, we had to renew our trash contract and that trash contract was going to be more expensive than the one we're currently in. So Jeff has kind of devised a step-in plan using those funds that we've put in the stabilization to kind of ease the pain, so to speak. So we've taken us, we have a 20% increase in our trash in year one. We're taking a little chunk of that increase and offsetting it with the $85,000. So we're not realizing that, you can consider that like a revenue source. We're going to fund part of the budget with free cash. And then that year, then the next year, that amount gets smaller. And it slowly phases in the increase in an amount that we can, you know, have a better ability to account for in, in the existing budget. And similarly, we're off, we're completely offsetting the 111F disability impinges because of the short-term nature of the costs. So at least the proposal here and the select board has to ultimately, and the FinCom have to ultimately adopt it and recommend it. But the, the proposal is that we use free cash, you know, this year, possibly next year, possibly the year after. But eventually, the idea is that that 110,000 dollars will, will fall off. So that's why it's really just, we put it up there because it's a net zero. Because when it falls off, the funding source goes away. So it's not like we have an extra 110,000 dollars in the budget. And so with all that, it's, that, we're still the four, I mean, we're, we're basically at zero. So you could, you could find that four, seven in a small revenue assumption adjustment, which, you know, equates to a fraction of a percent. But I would say that that, those changes there would get you to zero or, you know, at least a, a talking point at town meeting to say, we've, we've proposed a budget that fits within our means. Or maybe the, the, you know, the strategy is to propose the budget, you know, propose the balanced budget and then partner. And I don't want to speak for the schools because I don't know where they're going to end up. But I think there's a high likelihood that they're going to have an override, operational override request, partner with the schools and itemize, you know, these cuts and the impacts of them and let the residents decide. You know, it would be, you know, it's kind of, the, the whole point of this discussion would be to get some ideas from the board and what direction they want to go. We also have, and we're starting to explore with Hamilton is, in the school district is what a shift to Maya, excuse me, not, we're in Maya now for health insurance, but what a shift to the GIC would look like, which would likely realize some savings. But that probably won't real, we will probably won't realize those, those savings to the extent needed at least in this budget cycle.
Okay, so the disability is being shifted from the operating budget to the capital because it will eventually fall off. You have it listed twice, but it's not actually credited twice, correct?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a positive up top and it's, it's credited as a revenue down the bottom. So they offset each other. It's so that when you take one away, you don't, you don't have 110,000 dollars extra. Jeff? Does that make sense, Jeff?
Yeah.
You should probably.
So the reason we're moving that is this year, that, the amount for that particular person's salary is in the police budget and we're spending that money. But it's not actually helping the chief staff the police department. So what we're up to, up to do next year is now, it's, it was unknown at the time of creating the budget for FY26, so we couldn't deal with it. For FY27, we're going to move that particular person out into like just a general benefits line. No, it may or may not get to 110,000 dollars, we don't know. But we're moving it out of the, the chief's budget so that just that, that, the position and question is up there on that list. But that would allow full staffing there that isn't, you know, there's not 110,000 dollars in his budget that he can't actually access. So we're moving it out to a different, out of the police budget. But then we're, we're addressing it with free cash. You know, you hear us say over and over again, we don't like to use free cash for the operating budget. But this is really a one-time event. It might be a one-year or a two-year or a three-year one-time event, but it, it's not part of our ongoing budget. So we want it sort of pulled out of that and funded with a different source. You know, depending on how things go, we might only spend $30,000 of that and, and, you know, we'd have the rest of it would just roll back into free cash. But we wanted to take it out of the, the chief's budget so that he could be left with just actual salaries that are, you know, are on the street for him. So that's, that, and that was, was not accounted for in the original budget that was presented a couple of Saturdays ago. So we wanted to just bring it in so you know it was an additional cost, but then also show you, we have a plan to pull that out of, out of there. So it's not, it's not an override problem for us. It's going to be accounted for elsewhere.
Thank you, that helps.
Any other questions or comments, Steve?
I just have a quick question regarding the regional school district. Is that 235 for all building, for all buildings? Or is that specifics for just the high school?
No, that 235 actually, I didn't mention that. So that's, I had been going with the one, initially their first budget presentation was a mil, was the 965 at the top, about a million dollars over our, you know, kind of what we deem to be our, our living within our means, which is kind of, how much revenue growth did we get? And that kind of, that dictates, and that includes our two and a half percent adjustment, new growth, local receipts, permit fees, like all of that, everything that we have access to in revenue, either through taxation or otherwise, more than what we had last year, which accounts to be about a four percent increase. So that kind of sets the, the target amount. Like that's what we can, we know we can live within that without any special relief from the taxpayers such as an override. So their first budget was 965,000 dollars over the levy limit. They came up with a first adjustment or a second budget revision that was, reduced that original 965 by the 235,000, leaving the current, as it currently stands, and the most recent school district budget proposal at $730,000 above our levy capacity.
And that's operating costs and not commercial changes, correct?
That's, that's what.
That's operating costs. That's not a new roof, that's not.
No, that's, that's not capital. That's no, that's, that, that's not capital. Although they do have some capital expenditures. And Jeff, you, you might know more about what's, what's in their operating budget as far as capital.
Yeah, so the, if you think about the Cutler vote not going through, that led to the fact we were going to need to have some more maintenance and some safety upgrades and things like that at the, at the various schools. I believe that was about a $670,000 increase to the budget at the district level. So, you know, roughly speaking, we're about a third of that. So a little over maybe 200 is, is already built into the budget that will cut, you know, the capital is in the operating budget. The roof would be a secondary actual capital ask for a debt exclusion. But as of this time, those are the only ones we know about. We don't know about any other large capitals beyond the, the high school roof.
Now, there was a, excuse me, there was a five chairs meeting in December that you and I attended. And at that meeting, there was an initial school budget that tentatively reduced some of the numbers. Has there been a subsequent reduction down to 730? Because I know the school committee met after the five chairs meeting and determined that they would, you know, sharpen their pencils some more and go back. So I'm not sure if.
Yeah, well, that, I don't think we've seen that budget yet. Have you, Jeff? I know that, I know that they did seem to support trying to go a little bit deeper, but we don't have those.
But the 730 is what, what they had at the five chairs meeting, I think.
Yeah, and their, and the subsequent.
That's what was left for us after, at the five chairs meeting after they took out the 235. And I would say that's a correct kind of recap is that they are open to, you know, looking for ways to cut more. I don't know if they're looking to cut the entire 730, but finding us, you know, some deeper cuts. I mean, I, I think the challenge is as apportionment shifts to Wenham, you know, to get us the numbers we need, you know, takes some pretty significant effort on their part. And because if you, if you think back, you know, it's somewhere in the range of 150 or 180 of our increase this year is related strictly to apportionment. And that, you know, they have to make deeper cuts to, you know, they, I think when I sent it to Eric before they made the 235 cut, I mean, they would have needed to cut, you know, somewhere, you know, north of like $3 million to, you know, get us what we needed. And that's, that's pretty significant.
Right. Thanks. Yeah, Steve said, I mean, it is likely that there will be a, an override in Wenham this year for the school budget. And that's not at all because, you know, the leadership of the school department, Eric and Vinear, you know, a couple of free-spending radicals. I mean, they actually, I know, have been working hard to, to try to find places to, to cut that doesn't, you know, decimate staff and the like. But they're dealing with obviously, you know, insurance premium increases on a, on a very large scale, a new teacher's contract that, you know, was not as generous as some of the surrounding towns that saw strikes and work stoppages and so on. So to the extent that part of our thinking here at the town level is, you know, will there be any override? And we've already heard about the debt exclusion for the roof that we know is going to be there. I think there will very likely be one. And so that may be something that we consider. Because as you said, Steve, we, we, you know, we don't want to have a situation where we're pitting town against school because everybody's, you know, I think, trying to row in the same direction and, and be as fiscally prudent as one can without gutting the kinds of services that people in the town have come to expect, both on the municipal side and in the, in, with our education as well. So it'll be interesting to see what the next version of the school budget is, if it's trimmed a little more. Gary?
So I think we're emerging from a longer period of COVID, ARPA funds, federal grants, that we had a lot of outside money at times. And now, perhaps last year, but definitely this year, we're into a period of time where essentially we're on our own. And this really shows the, the true picture of what municipal costs are. So I'm thinking that, you know, we cannot request departments to operate with a little bit cut, a little bit more cut and so forth. That, that just creates stress and perhaps inequalities and inefficiencies within, in departments. So yeah, sure, we can do a 1%, but I think we need to educate the public that because of the two and a half percent rule, as compared to what's really going on in the world around us with the increases in insurance and everything down the line, that at some point, this town and perhaps every town around is faced with an override. So the question is how to approach that override. And I think the way to do it is to make sure our government services are right-sized, which I think we're very close to, and perhaps compare it to others and say, look, and folks, if you want the services that you have today, we're just going to have to fess up the fact that it's going to cost more. And on this year, we're going to need an override. Because in the past few years, we've had all these different assists, helps and different pots of money. And, you know, we've done all we've could in the past to better utilize the expenditures. And we also have realized better returns on our investment money. So what we have here, I think, is a true picture of how much money we have. And we are short unless we go to the override route. So I should think that some of these, as we've talked before, like Pleasant Pond, you know, you know, if you're taking in 2,000 or 3,000 and expended 23,000, that's something that we just can't afford anymore. That we have a particular situation with a long-term medical on a police officer. But we'd ask the chief and the fire chief too, that, you know, if we're going to bring on a second ambulance, then we need to right-size those departments to utilize the equipment and provide the services. And we know in the fire department case, that the ambulance use is actually a positive. So that, you know, I don't want to see us, you know, trying to squeeze the budget down to get below, which in one sense is an arbitrary levy limit. When in fact, we know that if we don't do it this year, then certainly next year or the year after, at some point, you're just going to have to fess up and say, folks, we need the override. So I think that, you know, perhaps this is the year to do it, to just say, you know, you know, test the waters here and see if the public has the willingness to go with the override. So, you know, we would go back with our list of red lines there. A lot of them can go to cuts. And I certainly would like to see us get close to where it would be under the levy limit. But I would not want to see that we stress our departments or cause longer-term shortages in either efficiencies or capabilities just to make this year's over, this year's budget. So I think we're, we're close to an override, folks. And just going to have to fess up. Can't have 10% insurance increases covered by two and a half percent tax levy.
Gary, I think you're right. We have to tell that story and it's a multi-year story.
And, you know, there's something else to think about is, you know, this is this year. An override to bring us to zero. Say we were able to raise, I don't know what, what we're talking about, $300,000 in an override this year. That will likely recreate itself next year with no additions. It's just turning, it's just turning the page. We just have, until we can get, you know, our pension assessment continues to go up. It's fixed outside of our revenue assumptions, our health insurance. Again, we're trying to, you know, accommodate or, or make some changes there, see what we can do. So, you know, we may be able to do something with that. But we have these fixed costs that every community, it's not just Wenham, is struggling with, that are growing outside our ability to raise revenue. So, you know, one thing that the board could consider, and I don't, I don't know necessarily what the best way you would know the residents the best is, you know, how they would, you know, seeing like a, a three or a five-year modeled plan, you know, and you do one override on, you know, like every five years is kind of like an override. If you look at like an Arlington or something like that, they do, they have planned overrides every five years. They stay, you know, they model out what they think they're going to need. They raise that in one year, they draw it down. They don't tax to the five years in that year one. But, you know, the residents have put trust. in that year one. But, you know, the residents have put trust in them that, you know, they use what they need in year one, two, three. And then on the fifth year, it's kind of like you reset the model and you see, you know, what's, what the snapshot looks. Because obviously, the far further you go in the model, the more inaccurate it is. So it's hard to see really out even five years. I think it's sometimes silly to, to try to model out that far. But, you know, something else to consider, if that, if override is the direction, whether we want to try to do one year at a time, or try to account for multiple years. And what would complicate that, just as I'm talking it through, is, is the, you know, the school side of it. It's like the town might be able to get theirs, but how do you keep it separate the next year, knowing that there's levy capacity available and the schools have needs? I could, I could see, you know, politically at town meeting that being sucked up pretty quickly as accessible money through, to be raised through taxation if that capacity is there.
Any other comments, questions?
Not for me.
Anything from the audience? And anybody online, Joe?
No.
All right. Well, that was, I think, a useful discussion. Appreciate you laying out the status. Steve, and I think you have, I hope anyway, a little, you know, sense of the committee on.
Yes, I think what I took, and Jeff, hop in here if you have any clarifying questions or, you know, so we're going to, you know, kind of go back to the FinCom and say, Joe, apparently the Select Board is not willing to consider the staffing cuts. They are exploring the reductions in Pleasant Pond. Like, ClearGov, is that something you want to continue to pursue or not? I mean, again, you won't be like held to the decision, but it's like,
I mean, it's, it's, it's the right long-term investment. I think in the long run, it's going to.
Yep, yep.
Save, save money and, you know, be a much better system.
All right. So outside of Pleasant Pond, that, you know, you're looking at trying to, obviously, we're going to have to have a Plan B budget if the override fails. But at this point, you're looking to propose a budget that supports the departmental requests as reflected here in general.
Anyone disagree with that?
So Steve, the proposal is to move forward the gatekeepers. And what else?
No, I, I think the, at least from what I heard, the only, well, the reductions that we've, that Jeff has already made and proposed from the original budget that the Select Board saw was, he drew down the general insurance line by $17,000 or 8%. And that's just looking at, we always, you intentionally have like a buffer zone in there because you never know when you had a new employee, they're on a family plan, employee has, gets married, has a baby, qualifying life event, you go to single to a family plan, or even they might not have insurance, and then they have a baby, qualifying life event, they get out, they're on a family plan. So like that can ebb and flow in pretty large swings. So generally, it's high. But I think it's at a level there with that reduction, you don't want to go any lower. But I just want to be, you to be aware that that reduction is, is already taking place, kind of in the background there, to what we deem to be a safe level. But certainly, a, a lot more closer to actual than it has been in the past. And, but, so my takeaway was that the Pleasant Pond gatekeepers, you know, there's, seems like there's some consideration there to explore removing that. But as far as the rest of them.
Well, the one, the 1% reduction in departmental expense budgets, I don't know that you're going to get much pushback from the board on that. I don't know whether the departments, you know, have identified how that might, you know, affect readiness or, you know, training objectives in the case of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be loved, I'll tell you that. But the, you know, the way I look at it is, it's, is you kind of have this pot of money and free, with free cash. And it's kind of, in a sense, everybody's money. So if you go over, like, there's always transfers in that. But as you reduce, as you reduce it globally, you're basically shrinking the excess that's going to contribute to free cash in the next budget cycle. So, you know, we're at six, we're at 6% of a generate, you know, are we, by going down that, you know, whatever, that $34,000, does that put us into trouble about not being able to fund our capital plan next year and not having a decent, you know, few hundred thousand dollars sitting in there for any sort of special town meeting that you got to call to, you know, raise money for, you know, God knows what, um, uh, yeah, emergency takes place? Like, is that $34,000? I guess what I'm trying to say is probably not. So like, could, we could reduce it by that if the board is, you know, looking and not create any catastrophic impact to, to operations. It would be kind of like, and you kind of figure out, it's like, it's like, all right, well, now we see who really overspent because we needed it. And then who has the extra money. And then you kind of shift it around and kind of rejigger it in the following year, instead of targeting and being like, all right, well, you have to give up $5,000. You don't have to give up anything. You know what I mean?
So I should think the, um, ClearGov delayed or goes a little bit later. Pleasant Pond goes, library part-time staff. It's very popular, but I think it's not absolutely essential. And I think if, if we're going to go for an override, we need to go for those real core municipal services of fire and police and water, if we need there, and say, this is, this is the line, this is what we need, if that's the level of service you want.
Yeah, well, I think you started that recap by saying the Select Board's unwilling. I mean, I think no one has an appetite for an override, and no one is looking for an override. So I just want to make sure we're clear, but we're given, as Gary put it, I think the, the core issue is that given the confines of Prop 2.5, it's very difficult to maintain your services within it. It's just, and, and towns all across Massachusetts are struggling with the same issue. We can't afford ourselves capped at 2.5 when everything else is escalating at much different rates, right? As we all know from our personal lives, same story. So it's not that we have an appetite or we're digging in or we're, you know what I mean? It's, it's that we're feeling like we need to face the reality.
Yeah, poor choice of words. So thank you.
Yeah, just, just so we're all clear. You know, it's sort of like, we need to face the music and decide a way forward.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right. Thanks very much. That moves us on to new business. There is no new business. And then item K, other matters, this may not have been anticipated by the chair. There are none. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
There it is. Move to adjourn, 8:18 PM.
Gary seconds.
Roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ben is yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out.